I'd like to call the meeting to order in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. The Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting. In the Home News Tribune, it has posted notice of this meeting at the Highland Park Middle School, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. And so, we don't actually, we don't have to do this, I don't think. So, Pledge of Allegiance?
Yep.
For the stand?
My first Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the love of Jesus Christ for all.
Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Verstappen?
Here.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. Bull?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Here.
Mr. Roselitz?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Linda, have there been any communications apart from the ones that are listed on the agenda?
Not to my recollection, no. I believe that's all.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of October 6, 2015?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Linda, a roll call, please.
Can I just mention that in the, for the public comment, I think it was the first public comment, instead of having the person's name was Monique Coleman, I think you had it as Monique Holman or something instead? She was speaking on behalf of H.P. Posack. The name should be Holman, Coleman, I think it's C.O.L.E.M.A.N. I will make that correction.
Any other discussion?
I have one question. The question about board meeting on Jewish holidays, is there a way to not have that happen again?
Is that related to the minutes?
No, we're, this is the discussion of the minute, we're voting on the minutes.
Okay. No.
You might want to bring that up under?
Old business?
Okay.
Or new business?
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Verstappen?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roselitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Oh, I'm sorry. He's not here. That's right, he's not here.
Student report?
Okay, so we'll start with the middle school, which just had its Spirit Week this past week, and the 7th grade won the pep rally. Some features were Twin Day, Pyjama Day, and Crazy Hair Day.
And for the high school, last week we had a Hispanic Heritage Celebration. The Color Run signups will have a price hike after this Tuesday. The Deca Zombie Walk will be next week, the 29th. The high school will be having its homecoming game against Point Pleasant this Thursday, this Friday. And the homecoming dance will be the Thursday before. The haunted house will be on the 29th. And the high school last Wednesday had PSAT testing. The football team beat Denellen this Friday. And girls tennis team is currently undefeated this season.
Okay, and we have a special report from Bardell. So the first thing on the list is the Hispanic Heritage, which got a lot of coverage at Bardell. They had a cultural quiz, Hispanic flags on display, and many other in-class activities. They're also having the Scholastic Book Fair. Proceeds go to smart boards and other interactive whiteboard systems. They also just completed the Week of Respect, spearheaded by Counselor Mr. Kirk, and they had some other engaging activities related to that. They also have the Run for Fun, which will happen this spring.
Like, like the high school and middle school, Bardell School also had an ice cream special just to welcome their students back for New Year. They also had a fire prevention assembly, which Dr. Taylor attended and helped demonstrate the process of wearing protective gear during a fire. They also had Walk Your Child to School Day, and the Bardell LearnScape Project, which Miss Passachow was leading, is complete and looks very nice. And so, this last Wednesday, Amida and I met with Dr. Taylor and Mr. Lassiter to discuss Twitter, or ideas that students, how students could interact with social media and how the school could reach students with social media. And we made a few proposals. The first one is that we could use a social media account to provide those who are unable to attend board meetings with important minutes. As we know, the board meetings can run a fairly long time, and so if we provide them with minutes, this could shorten the amount of time that they have to search on the YouTube link. We also want to use this account to provide students with updates and reminders about the school, such as delayed openings or testing.
We also thought the social media account could be used to display student club and school achievements, such as those that we display in the student report. We also thought we could display event dates, such as sports events and the Color Run. And finally, we have created a survey to determine student opinion on using social media. So we made some photocopies, and we'll pass that around now if you're willing to look at it now.
Thank you. Dr. Taylor?
So, I begin my report with one of my favorite things to, which to report, and that is the wonderful things some of our students are doing, as I mentioned to the board and the community. Once a month, I will be asking principals from each of our schools to identify students who sometimes go unrecognized for the wonderful things that they're doing, either for our community or for the greater community. So tonight, Mr. Lassiter is here to introduce some of his faculty, who are going to talk about two students, one of whom just walked in the door.
Off of the playing field.
Thank you. So, Mr. Lassiter, why don't you step up to the podium and tell us a little bit about these special students?
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. When I got an email, actually, we met with Dr. Taylor, and he kind of gave us all the backdrop of what we were going to be doing in regards to nominating the students. I sent out an email, actually, to the faculty, and immediately I got two responses. And what I had written in the email is what Dr. Taylor described, was, let's look to the students that may not get all the recognition that they really deserve. Maybe it's the all-around student that does so many things that it's hard to give them kind of the recognition that they deserve because they do so much. Or the student that really stands out as being so special in so many different ways. And so, the first person I want to introduce, because I'm not sure the other faculty member will make it, again, good, so I'm going to introduce Ms. Wilson first. She responded with an email that really touched my heart. So, Ms. Wilson is our world history teacher for the 9th grade, but when she describes this student, you'll see why she chose her as this student to be recognized in this spotlight. Ms. Wilson.
It is with great pleasure that I recommend Maria Alejandra Peña as the student I believe most embodies our school's mission of openness, wisdom, leadership, and spirit.
Can you pull the mic down a little bit? Just pull it down a little bit. Thanks.
No problem. I thought my teacher voice would carry. I've taught Alejandra for two years, and I immediately knew she was exceptional. She is one of the most kind and open-minded students I have ever met. Many different students in the high school have told me that they love working with her because she's incredibly compassionate and never judges anyone. She purses herself to perfection in her pursuit of wisdom. Although my class is one of her greatest challenges, as she came from Colombia and is still in the process of learning English, she embraces the core character trait of wisdom by staying after class to get extra help on assignments. She will write current event assignments until they look like a native speaker wrote them. She even decided to retake my class a second year so she could improve her writing and reading skills before she entered college. I was also lucky enough to see her display her skills outside of the classroom. Alejandra is a born leader. Other students have told me that Alejandra keeps them on track by reminding them to do her homework, their homework, encouraging them to come on time to class, and not to skip any days, and to leave behind any drama that may be distracting them, whether it be family or friends. Her aura of positivity has a beautiful impact on this school. Another example of her leadership is when she and another student led a discussion about violence in Latin America after watching a documentary on human rights abuses. Although both students learned English as their second language, they were brave enough to share their personal experiences and expand the worldview of every other student who attended. Her grit and determination to take advantage of every opportunity has shown she has an exceptional spirit, and we are thankful she has shown us this spirit, not only as a cheerleader for our high school teams, but also in our classes as well.
Mr. Rucktischel. He was coaching the girls just now to, I guess you, unless you scored after I left, a 5-0 win over South Amboy. 6-0, sorry. And so, as you saw, this nomination is actually by Mr. Rucktischel of Elizabeth Landis, who, he writes, the first word that comes to mind, and before I actually read this, I need to preface this. He sent me a very short, this is all-around, she really fits this description perfectly. I said, Chris, could you give me a little bit more so I can write something up and really actually have something to say? Literally five minutes later, if not 10 at the most, I got a two-pager. And so, this just came right out. I thought it was a recommendation letter that he had already done for her. Yeah. It really could be. First word that comes to mind when I think of Elizabeth Landis is dedication. Elizabeth is the type of person who takes something on and she puts her whole self into it. She has a determination of a bull and lets nothing get in her way. Elizabeth has not only participated and volunteered in Buddy Ball, but she has also been running the program herself. Buddy Ball is a program, as I understand it, where high school athletes play with special-needs children for an hour and a half every Saturday morning, where they are filling the role of a role model, friend, sister or brother, or a teacher, they are whatever the child needs for that hour and a half. I think it is a remarkable program for those children, but more importantly, it provides a place for so many other students to go and be a part of service to give back to the community. I think there are often students who want to give back, and they don't know where or how. And while Elizabeth is probably only doing the program to fulfill her own personal need to give back and do something good for those young special-needs children, she also is providing an opportunity to spread that feeling to her peers, which is a double gift. If we step away from Buddy Ball, we can look at her leadership on the soccer field and/or basketball and/or track. Mr. Rucktischel? Come on, I'm reading your words. While Elizabeth is captain this year, she practically acted as a captain last year as well. She is always prepared in handing out tissues, athletic tape, food, et cetera, because she is so well organized. Liked and respected by her peers and teammates, she takes care of them all. Captain's practices historically have had a bad showing in previous years, but with Elizabeth as captain, there was a 200% consistent increase in attendance in the summer. Practices. I saw many of those, the field was filled with the girls. I know there are two other captains, but I know that it was the doing of Elizabeth. Not to mention, she traveled back to Highland Park from New York just to make it to those captains' practices. Elizabeth may struggle in classes, and I know she is currently stressing about SATs and college applications and essays, so she is juggling what feels like 30 balls at the moment and still keeping her head on straight. She fits in her homework and preparation amongst it all and asks for little to nothing from anyone else. She stands on her own two feet. That's Mr. Rucktischel's words. You want to add anything, sir?
This is a more complicated, once I read the nomination to the board, I just knew it was described.
I actually had to take these words and then think about it, because Elizabeth is also someone that, even if she makes a mistake, she recovers from it and does the best. So, Elizabeth, come on up here, because...
So, at this time, I want to, as diplomatically as possible, give the families who have guardians who came to recognize our students a chance to exit, including Mr. Lassiter, and anybody else who might not be safe for the remainder of the day, and I'll give you a chance while I set up my presentation, if you'd like to step out. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lassiter.
Scott, you need to, Scott, Scott, Scott? You need a microphone. You need the microphone.
That's right, standing up, standing up there. Behind your water bottle, standing.
I'm not much of a microphone guy, but I'll go for it. So, I do want to spend the next few minutes doing two things. One, sharing with the board and the community a project that the district and the local government are working on called Feed the Children. Then I'm going to provide everyone an update on one of the four goals that focuses on student achievement, academic achievement mostly. And finally, I want to start to lay the groundwork for the strategic planning process that I anticipate will begin in the spring of 2016. So, Mayor Mittler has led a small group of members of the township, including myself as both a resident and, of course, representing the board and the school district, folks from Elijah's Promise and the local food bank, to start talking about how we can provide meals for those children who qualify for free and reduced lunch on the days when they don't have school. That includes holidays, the teachers convention coming up, and of course, the summer. We had our first meeting, this is a project being spearheaded by the mayor, and I will keep the board abreast of our involvement, but right now, it looks like the funding will come mostly from grants to pay for the food that we will provide the children. Our involvement at this point is to, when the time comes, provide information carefully. We are going to take this slowly, and I'll be keeping the board in the loop on how we might provide this information regarding those students who would qualify for these, for these meals. So that project is called Feed the Children. I want to shift gears on you, though, and talk about our goals. Every board meeting, I will provide some kind of a goal update. Tonight, I just want to focus on this goal, ensuring our children's success by providing them diverse, but high-quality educational opportunities, what in, as you speak, we might also call differentiating instruction to meet the needs, cultural, academic, social, emotional needs of different kids. Specifically tonight, I want to touch on these pieces. How we are focusing our staff development to help teachers help their kids on a very individual level, and how we are going to be leveraging all the expertise in the district to start to improve curricula. It's something I'll be tackling along with teacher teams in about a month. So, these are just some shots I've taken of classrooms in which differentiation of instruction is taking place. By that, I mean, kids in many cases are broken into groups, both ability groups or heterogeneous groups, but in some cases, based on their, their different needs and how they complement each other, both academic, social, and emotional needs. It's happening K-12, a lot at the lower-grade level, especially in the area of literacy and math. This is actually an example of a structure that's used by our grades III and IV teachers. I would like to see it instituted grades K-5 down the road. It's referred to as the Daily Five, and it's a model that would have kids working in what we used to call, back in my day, stations, learning stations, what we call literacy centers. The idea being to have an opportunity to focus on small groups of kids' needs in these learning centers, and then also take those small groups aside when necessary, so there is personal teacher time, so instruction can be adapted just for that small group with the teacher, while the other kids are independently working in these literacy groups. The one thing that I have noticed is a need already, is the want for us to institutionalize some of the good things that are happening in the separate classrooms. There needs to be a cohesiveness and an order to what we're doing, and I think it all has to be guided with an overall aim. That aim, I anticipate, will come out of the strategic planning process. But for now, I'm going to be focusing on some immediate efforts, including something which was touched on in a recent workshop I attended with several teachers, and Jennifer Knapp, our supervisor of special projects. And that is the immediate need, we can see already, I can see myself, to do more than just focus on kids' academic needs, but also focus on their cultural needs and how they respond according to their, their background, and not just their religious background or their ethnic background, but any cultural affiliation that they bring to the classroom that might influence the way they acquire knowledge. I will be working on that piece while meeting with several groups of teachers. Today, after school, I met with each group, each faculty in all of our schools for about 15 minutes in each school, to talk about the need for us to work as teams, K-12, so we could vertically articulate how we are being culturally responsive, how we are institutionalizing the good things that I'm seeing across the board, so that there's a common language when our kids grow from kindergarten to first, second, third grade. And also, these groups are going to help me just start to collect more research and more data, so that when we go into the strategic planning process, which is going to have to begin reflecting on what we're already doing, I have all of this information in front of me that I can share with the community. So let me shift gears and talk about the last item on my agenda, and that is what the strategic plan will likely look like in broad terms, because I have not had a chance yet to talk to the board about the details. So all the information I'm going to be collecting on my travels and through these groups with whom I'm working will help me share a history with the community. By reflecting on the history, we can then think about what we have done wrong, what we have done right, through the strategic planning process, and begin to determine what we aspire to do, what our goals are, what our dreams are for the future. And the future could be whatever that committee of members of the community who will be involved in strategic planning decides. It could be three years, it could be four years, it could be five years. We'll then focus on creating measurable, outcome-based goals, SMART goals, SMART is an acronym, for strategic, manageable, attainable, I forgot what the R is, and T is timely. But it has to do with being very specific and lockstep about the goals you want to attain, when you're going to attain them, and what actions are aligned to get there. I am already envisioning that the strategic planning process will take place over the course of three days. The board and I will have to have a discussion about whether we want those three days to be consecutive, when that would happen, if we want to lay those out over the course of three weekends or three weeknights. And I expect, I hope, it'll culminate in August of 2016, so we can hit the ground running September 2016 with goals, district goals, based on our strategic plan, that we can also align to my own superintendent goals, that the board might want to consider as its goals, that can then feed its way down to the SGO goals, the teachers must meet by the end of each year, to the professional development goals our principals must meet, so that there's a pyramid. And everybody is focused on the same goals that came out of the strategic planning process, that's going to encompass input from all the stakeholders, not just the board, administrators, teachers, but also residents, residents who may not have children in our schools, but have some kind of stake in what we're doing, local business owners. So, I'll be talking to the board more about this and the community as well, as things start to take shape. And that's my report.
Go ahead and ask questions at this point? Do you want to take some questions? For sure? Yeah, thank you. The slide that you showed all the committees, they were listed, I didn't get a really clear read of all of the committees, but just a general question that I had. Well, first of all, I wanted to say that it was amazing, I couldn't be happier with the cultural awareness component that you mentioned at first. That was great to see. And then, my question was, the committees, how will they be peopled? How will we choose who is on the committees?
That's a great question. So first of all, the committees will include K-12 groups of teachers in every content area, including special subjects, physical education, art, music. There'll be one representative from each grade level, a special education representative, BSI, basic skills representative, and likely a member of the child study team will be invited to join. What I will, what will likely happen is, I'll have several people wanting to do all kinds of things, and I'm going to have to slot them for specific things. If I have many more people than I can take on, you know what, it's probably going to come down to just getting input from the principals and supervisors, but who they feel has the expertise that they can share with the group. I haven't crossed that bridge yet, because I'm, I think, I'm thinking that we are a small district, I've created quite a few committees, you haven't seen the other four or five, I created like the Safety Committee, and the, so I might, it might not be very easy for me to collect as many folks, as I hope, just because we're, we're a small group.
Right.
So I guess my answer is, I haven't thought too hard about how I'm going to choose, but I'll probably be getting input from the leadership team.
Okay. I was, I guess I was asking more about the community involvement, if there would be parents and community members chosen.
Okay, that's a good question. No, not on these committees. These are internal committees that will drive curriculum decisions and whatnot. There actually is one committee that I didn't show on the slide, and that's the District Safety Committee, that does have members of our community coming on board, and of course, a member of the Board of Education. So that's the one committee where we have a nice group from outside our school district as well.
Okay. And will there, as far as the history component, putting together some sort of understanding of where we have been and what has worked and what hasn't, will that involve the community, or will that be internal as well?
That's a great question. That will involve the community when we hit strategic planning. So I'll likely come to the planning committee, and that incidentally, it might be as many as 100 people involved in this process, broken down into smaller groups, obviously. And I will bring to those, however many folks, all of the information that I've collected from these committees, and then they're going to be, they're going to be tasked to come up with their own history, because there are things that the teachers will not be aware of. We're actually going to be talking about our personal history, our national history. We're going to be talking about a lot of things that we think may influence our aspirations as the first phase of the strategic planning process.
Okay, great. It made me think of the work that the Human Relations Committee has done already, because I know that there had been a handout that I had seen about the different schools that were in different, I guess, districts, or whatever they called them at the time, that were... were specific to that neighborhood. The Triangle had a school that was Irving, that was all of this. So it was really interesting to hear, and Jerry probably could teach us all about that.
You know, wouldn't it be a bad idea for me then to reach out to that specific group?
Yeah.
And recruit them?
Yeah, absolutely.
For the strategic planning group?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Any other questions? So we're going to move on to committee reports. Claire, can you give the curriculum committee report, please?
Yes, I can. It starts on page two of the agenda. I was excited to see that number two, I believe, if I'm right, a lot of the presenters are staff members, current staff members, is that right? So that's great, because we all often talk about how much our staff knows, and how can they share what they know with other members of the staff. And then, number three is a video project that is going to use our students. It's called, what's it called? Has something to do with Race to the Top, early level, early learning challenge, appointment of after-school tutors funded by Title I. And the last item, number six, is, oh, substitutes for the after-school program, or no, not substitutes, coordinators for the after-school program. And that is all that is on the agenda, and we did not meet tonight, the curriculum committee.
I do want to just clarify that passing around a handout about the NIEER study that we're talking about, a shout-out to our teachers. The NIEER is actually taping our classes, because they're best practice examples, that they want to show the world as part of their training series of what to do right. So it's actually a nice feather in our hat.
That's great.
And this is with the Graduate School of Education as well?
Correct.
I'd love to give a shout-out to them, because everything they bring into the district, I think, is always fantastic. I love when we're doing more work with them.
Any other questions for Claire? Catherine, can you give us the finance report?
The Finance and Facilities Committee did meet tonight, we discussed policy. I'll just go through, again, Linda's agenda items that she's noted some particular information on. Item six, Middlesex Regional will be conducting search services for us, this is the proposal on the agenda for the new Director of Ed Services. And then, item seven and item 11 are, again, sort of flow-through funds for two non-public schools, for, one for nursing services, the other for security services. Item eight is requested by the auditor to memorialize funds transferred for particular programming in the school to the general operating account. Items nine and 10 refer to an CUSAC requirement that we are identifying the projects that are still outstanding on the long-range facilities plan. Item 12 is about a tailgate spreader for salt and sand, just in case we get any winter weather this winter.
Probably not, though.
No, I don't think we'll really need that.
Now that we have a spreader, there won't be.
Better to be safe than sorry.
Agreed, agreed.
Item 16 refers to a change order related to mold remediation.
And that's on the addendum, right?
Yeah, on the, I'm sorry, on the addendum. And we have spoken about that mold remediation in previous meetings. Item 17 on the addendum is referring to approving a change order, a change in vendor for the wood floor refinishing that usually happens in the summertime, right before school opens. And item 18 is about remediation for a mold situation at Irving School, having to do with water infiltration at a window, that, again, we had, it was an emergent issue we had to take care of right away. We have to talk just briefly about the work on the robotics health room division is proceeding. There should be picnic tables at Irving School any day now, and also a replacement slide at Bartle School Playground, and that, I believe, is it. Oh, Linda also mentioned that their, yeah, thank you. Mr. Lassiter proposed an outdoor classroom in the basin, right outside the middle school and high school, as an outdoor classroom, that would have a podium made of concrete and some old bleacher stands, is that right, set into the, to the slope. So that work is going to proceed on that, should be pretty cool, as an alternative to staying in hot buildings on hot summer days, or anytime, just getting out in the sun. That's it.
Any questions?
I had a question on numbers seven and, now I lost it, seven and 11, yes. Non-public security and non-public nursing. So we're providing funds, we're providing actual personnel. So I guess I'd like some clarity on what number seven and number 11 are providing.
We receive aid from the state, but it's not really our money, it's money that's intended to go to the non-public schools. We are a flow-through, but the aid has to be administered properly. The Middlesex Regional Ed Services Commission has offered to all of the districts that they serve to be able to administer the programs in a coordinated fashion, so they will hold joint meetings with all the non-public schools, they will help to facilitate the administration of the funds. The security aid, I understand, which is similar to the non-public technology aid, requires specific board approval for any expenditure of funds of those aid. But again, the aid simply flows through us, we do pay the commission an administrative fee for their services, which is outside of that, but it's minimal, and the amount of funding is minimal, too.
So the funding comes from the state or the federal government? The state government?
This was that security aid that was passed, I believe, earlier this year?
That's what I thought, so it was.
It's like $25 per student, it's really not a lot of money.
Because I went to a non-public school, and I don't remember our nurse or security being paid.
This is all new.
This is brand-new.
The security aid, not the nursing?
No. We receive a number of non-public aids, nursing, textbooks, technology, what's called chapters 192 and 193, which are services for special education students at non-public schools, such as speech therapy, classification services, et cetera.
And those aren't new, those actually.
Those have been around. The security aid, this is brand-new, and in fact, I'm going to training on it next week, as far as technical, technical training, so I know what this is all about and how we're allowed to administer the expenditure of the funds.
Okay. I had, I had thought that it was related to the new legislation, I wasn't quite sure. So thank you.
Yeah, so while it doesn't come directly out of our budget, you know, certainly there's a limited pool of money that goes towards education, so the more that starts shifting towards private schools, the less there's going to be naturally available for public schools. So it's certainly not a direct, money comes out of our budget and goes to the private schools, but, you know, if the state's only got X million, billion, whatever dollars to go towards public educa, or to go towards education, and more of it starts getting diverted to private schools, then it's clear there's less left over.
Which is why the red flag was raised, because it feels like we're getting less and less from the state government. So, year after year, I was curious, so thank you.
Catherine, can you explain about the outdoor classroom, about the funds and materials?
I think it's volunteer labor, and, as I said, the bleachers thing, the seating is, we have already, and the labor is volunteer.
So it's not going to cost the district anything?
Well, I don't know if it's not anything. Is it not anything, Linda?
No, this is a donated project, in essence. We are using our own bleachers, which otherwise we would have sold for scrap, which it would have been nominal, but the podium is being donated, and the, all the labor is being donated.
Great. Anyone else? Jerry?
Yes, personnel did meet during the week, and we talked about some.
Tonight, too.
And we met tonight, various personnel issues, with a few new hires that are on the agenda, as well as the addendum is a retirement, and we did discuss the interim special education director position.
And also the search for the.
And the search for it.
And then tonight, we also talked about policy, we met again and.
Oh, I thought you would say that in your policy, okay. And we did, we went through our.
No, you reported on the personnel policies.
Oh, I thought you, that got captured, you got to capture all.
Whenever I recommend full-time employees who are certificated, I'll say a few words about those folks, based on the references I get. So I have to share that, first of all, Kathleen Lotkin-House is being proposed as our next interim special education director. She just retired from the Providence School District, not far from where I used to work. So I have a very good relationship with the superintendent, Dr. Dave Riggi up there, and he spoke the world of her. She's a veteran, she's been in it for decades, and stayed in that one place for all that time, which is something I'd like to see here, too, down the road. I had met with her, a member of a child study team, the secretary to the director, and Mr. Lassiter, with Kathleen, to vet the candidate, and we were all very pleased with her. I should also say a few words about Stephanie MacCall, she's a social worker I'm recommending to work at the middle school, she is ABA certified. I had a chance to talk to one of her colleagues, who said such things as, I'm paring it down to just get to the, to the good stuff, because she said quite a bit of great things about her. She had all the good things to say, parents and students highly respected her. She came on board where she was very quickly, and she expects that she'll get up to speed here in a hurry, which is a good thing, because she's starting a quarter of the way into the year. One of the nice things that I heard about her was that she put a big focus on running small groups for students, social groups in particular, social skills groups, which I think is a premium now, to get out of any of our faculty members, who were so busy, you know, having to do all kinds of things. And then she just capped it off by saying, she puts her heart into everything she does, and that really capped it for us. So that's Stephanie MacCall.
Can I ask a quick question on that? It just says she's going to be a social worker for the district, so is she literally in all four schools?
Well, no, she's going, her work is going to be at the middle and high school.
At the middle and high school, okay.
Which is where our greatest need is right now, especially with our ED population.
Okay. All right, great, thanks. Oh, and then I did want to ask one quick question. So there's, we're approving three full-time paras and one part-time para, so is there, has there just been a?
A demand. We had at least one new resident, one IEP that called for it. Actually, we, one person was moved to another school, as you'll see on the agenda, so that left another, an opening. So it's, it's really a combination of new families into the district and IEP needs.
Gotcha.
Yeah, all one-on-one.
They're all, these are all one-to-ones?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a quick question also about the social worker. She seems like a fantastic hire, based on the background that we were given. I had a question from a community member about why do we need a new position? And my understanding is that this was already in our budget, but that we had not yet hired for the position, am I correct about that?
It was in the budget, Mr. Soto wanted to wait till I came on board to make the final hire, which I appreciate.
Right.
So we're now at that point. I, even though she went through the whole process, and was interviewed, interviewed, I interviewed her myself, because I am recommending her personally to the board, so I was just as comfortable as Mr. Soto was with her.
Fantastic, great, thank you.
And I also had a question, not specifically about her, but I wanted to know if there was a high demand at the high school and the middle school for any particular reason? Was there a high demand because of college applications or anything like that? And if the demand would be better met by adding, not denying her position, but adding another school psychologist into the district?
That's a good question. I can't answer the first one, I'll get back to you on that, regarding the reason why we have a greater demand. I can venture to answer the second one, but I'll confirm, too, and that is that we were looking for, actually, I can't answer that question, you know what, I was about to tell you, it's because we want somebody who's ABA certified, but there's no reason why a school psychologist could be ABA certified as well.
Okay.
So I can get back to you about why we want to focus on social work as opposed to school psychology.
Okay, thank you.
Those two things.
Any other questions?
The policy committee, I guess I will give the policy report. We did meet this week, and we reviewed all of the bylaws. They are on the addendum, we met on Thursday, so they ended up not making it into the regular agenda, they are on the addendum and in your drives. I wanted to call your attention to a few, most of the changes are minor. We agreed to, we agreed to change the timeline of the self-evaluation, because we found last year that the budget cycle sort of made getting our self-evaluation done in a timely way difficult. We agreed to add labor contracts to the website, as many of our neighboring school districts do, in the interest of transparency.
Do you know offhand who does that? I mean, I'm just not aware of putting labor contracts up, do you?
They're all, if you look, you'll find that there are a great many districts that do it, in the interest of transparency, they're public documents.
Okay. Do you know offhand districts that?
You'll just have to look.
You just said that neighboring districts do it, without knowing what neighboring district?
Well, I can speak for that. I do know that my previous district would put numbers of policies out there, especially the ones that are required to be made public upfront.
No, not policy, she's talking about the labor contract. She's talking about putting, no, 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 she's talking about putting the actual contract, our contract with the teachers.
Speaking of policies.
On the website. Did you do that in, I mean, I'm just wondering if this has been discussed with the union, if this is something that's being brought up, or if this is just, I've never heard of this, so I'm just asking.
No, as far as I know, it has not been discussed by the union, but the, you know, the contracts are public documents, anybody can have a copy of them. And many districts in New Jersey, if you look on School Boards Association, you'll see that many districts in New Jersey put contracts on the website.
I've just never seen it.
It seems like, you know, it just seems like, in the interest of transparency, it's a document that.
And I'm not certainly looking to be opaque, it's just not a practice that I've seen, and this is the first I'm hearing about it, so I was just asking, so, but we're not, nobody can tell me of any other districts. Did you do this in Kenilworth that you know of, Scott? Was the teachers' union contract?
I'll email you a bunch of districts when I get home, Darcy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And you'll see also that we reviewed but didn't change a bunch of policies. I think the wording of this is, it says, "I moved with the Board of Education, except the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following policy to be reviewed," but they actually have already been reviewed, so I think we need to change the wording.
What are they being, what will it say, and what are we voting on with number three?
So number three are policies that we reviewed, they are bylaws that we reviewed, but had no changes to. The committee reviewed and had no changes to.
So we are voting that we don't want any changes? We agree with the committee?
See, now, I actually, I don't remember us even putting this on the agenda before. I've never done this before.
I think only because we wanted to put reviewed and the date at the bottom of each one.
No, because, because in the last policy review, you'll see that almost all the policies have reviewed from 25. I think we did. I don't think so.
So number two, D2, all of those have changes?
Yes. And they're on the drive. But the changes either struck through or bolded.
Okay. I mean, I'm inclined myself, as you will hear, to abstain from a vote, you know, I didn't have time after 3 o'clock to look at them. Is there any inclination to table these until the next meeting, so we can check them out?
Well, this is a first reading, so we can make changes to them for second reading.
Okay.
That's why, that's why I thought it'd be okay to put them on the addendum. We didn't meet until Thursday.
Right, sure.
So there was no way to get them on the regular agenda.
Right, right, just a couple hours wasn't enough, but yeah, that, no, I see what you're saying. Thanks.
So, am I missing something? I had written, I did sort of get a chance to glance through them, not terribly efficiently, but I had written down 0155 board committees. But I had written down 0155 Board Committees and some notes on that one, but now I don't see that in the drive.
That's not bylaws, I thought.
Yeah, yeah. I'm looking in the, I'm looking in the folder that has all the bylaws, and I go from 0154 to 0161. But I know it was there before.
Yeah. I think there's something funky going on with the...
With the drive.
With the drive.
I can email it to you now if you want.
The policy itself?
Through that particular policy.
Okay. Let me refresh, because before I was having this problem. I'd refresh, and then things would miraculously reappear, except this one's not. But anyway. You have, yes.
Well, I don't know if it's the recent one or what it is.
Yes. No, that's it.
Is that it?
Okay. But reading through the one on Board Committees, I mean, there's so much in here that we're not actually doing.
So we, I thought we took out the whole part about minutes.
It was in there when I read it.
So that, so...
I mean, personally, I'd like to leave that in. I mean, that's something that I've been asking for, other districts do do, is, you know, I went to a whole session on this last year at workshop. This is something that's being, you know, pitched as best practice. I mean, speaking of transparency, this is...
As you know, the way that we do it is that the report, the committee report becomes part of the overall minutes of the, of the meeting. So somebody from the committee reports on the committee meeting, and then that, that report becomes part of the overall minutes.
But I see this as a little bit different, because this is kind of a structure where the committee meetings are happening, you know, kind of more in advance of the meeting. It's not just happening day of. It's, we actually met, here's what we discussed, you know, it's kind of, we kind of almost backtrack it, you know? We write them...
I don't understand.
Well, I mean, we don't, the committees don't meet before they're written up, is what I'm saying. It's written up before the committees ever meet. This structure that's in the, in the policy is the committee actually meets and minutes are taken of the meetings.
Well, and right now, somebody takes minutes of the meetings and then reports out on the meetings in the general meeting. Somebody is taking notes. The chair of the committee is...
But we don't actually, I hear what you're saying, but I think there is, I think there is a distinction. We're sort of backfilling a little bit right now.
Again, I'm not, I'm not clear what you're saying.
That what would happen if we were doing it this way is an agenda would be created. I don't know that when you sit down in, in policy, or in, yeah, in policy or in personnel or, and I know, I mean, Linda does this, certainly for us, we sit down with an agenda for what we're going to talk about in finance. But then those, those agendas that Linda comes up with for us, for our committee meeting, aren't, it has more detail than what's on the agenda, is what I'm saying. The agenda that we have in our meeting is different than the agenda that's on the agenda. It has more detail. It's a little bit more fleshed out. Those are the kind of minutes that I would like to see. I think it would help all of the different committees to see kind of more in-depth what's happening in the other committees, beyond just what's on the agenda.
Well, I can tell you that in the policy committee meeting, we actually, I don't know why, it concerns me that the policy remains unchanged there, because we actually did sort of strike out some of that stuff. But if you, so for second reading, if you want to come back with a proposal, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I'd propose that what's in there stays.
Well, so right now, it's, see, I have to tell you, I don't think what is in there is in there right now, because I, we made changes that I feel you're not looking...
Yeah, and now it's, do you still see it? Do, what do you see?
I'm looking at this right now.
I'm a little concerned, because, yeah, because Sue indicated, Susan indicated earlier that there were, there was a problem. So I'm feeling like you're looking at the unreconstructed policy.
Well, what I'll do is email the board, full board, the changed policy tomorrow morning when I pull it out of my, our computer.
So did you also take out where it says the policy committee will, like, establish at the beginning of the year, kind of like we establish a board, a board calendar that the policy committee will establish a calendar of no less than four meetings a year? Because I don't think that's a practice that we've, at least not since I've been here, that we've engaged in. I certainly think it would be helpful to have that, that structure set up from the onset, because policy's been a little loosey-goosey, but...
So are we tabling these, then?
Let's table them.
I think we're gonna, well, I think we should actually put them on first reading. And then we can, we can discuss them and make changes to second reading, because we are...
Is there a timeline issue?
There is a timeline issue.
When do they need to be done?
Well, the entire policy review is supposed to be done by the end of the year.
Okay.
So you have at least two more board meetings to review those, that particular policy.
Right.
Which I'll email everybody with the strike-throughs, whatever changes we made.
So I guess my question is, if we could table it, would that be possible?
I think we're gonna end up with, so, you know, it's my hope that the committees are going to sort of do some policy review before the end of the year. We're gonna end up with agendas that have, you know, 60 or 70 policies on them. So there is some, there is some pressure to move these along.
Is there anything unethical about voting on something that you haven't read, though? Because I'll be honest, I have not had time to read them.
You can abstain if you want to.
Okay. I mean, if we can get the timeline met and still abstain, that's what I would...
Well, I mean, I've just expressed to you my concerns about the timeline.
Yeah, it's tight. I understand.
No, we should have been doing this all along. Obviously, we didn't, I didn't come and say, oh, I'd like to, you know, go through the 2000s today. It just didn't really occur to me.
Right, right.
So...
But whether we abstain or not, obviously, we can still have time to re-review it, think about it again, and then make changes for that second reading.
That's what second reading is for.
It's really kind of almost a moot point to...
Right.
Well, but, I mean, to be fair, first reading is for everyone to have read it. I mean, I understand Michelle's point, how do I vote on something that I haven't read?
I have to take responsibility for that. I'm the one who's in charge of the drive and making sure you have all the agendas, so I'll make sure that policy...
We have not been going through it on a regular basis. I mean, I've never come to the board and said, wow, you know, I just noticed we haven't been through a certain number of policies. I for one have let it slip completely, so...
I think that we, especially the new board members, were unaware that this was something that was...
We knew in theory, you know, that it needs to be done.
And, yeah, Michelle, you're actually a member of the, of the policy committee, so these were actually policies that, you know, that presumably you should have gone over for last Thursday's meeting.
Well, the first time that we scheduled to meet was just days ago.
That's right.
So I was not able to get to that meeting for personal reasons, but that's the very first time that we had ever scheduled a meeting.
I believe that's the same is true with personnel. Excuse me, today was our first personnel policy review meeting, which is fine. I certainly didn't come to you and say, hey, I'm, you know, I think we should start meeting on these, but, you know, we just, it wasn't done, and...
And while I appreciate your apology, I don't know that you can really take...
Having been here for three weeks.
Any kind of a soft villain.
Let's just...
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I mean, we'll abstain if we want to abstain.
Yeah.
I think the ship has sailed in terms of getting this done in a timely manner.
Exactly.
If I could just...
And read.
...comment on the policies for review. I looked back, and I do see that there was a list of policies that were approved as reviewed on July of 2012, the July meeting, 23rd. But the wording is really not necessarily adequate, because it says probably the same thing.
2012?
July 23rd, 2012.
It would have been 2013.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2013.
Okay. Yeah.
I have it right here.
Well, there, there were policies all through the year.
No, July 23rd, 2012.
2012.
Yep. 6000s and 7000s.
I don't know.
We might have been at the tail end of one cycle and before the next cycle.
Okay. So what's next? Public comment. No, I think actually we are at the first part of the public comment, the first-ish, the first public comment.
Yeah, it didn't show up on the agenda, the first part.
It's here. Page two. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation as reserved this time for your comments. If you would like to address the board, please go to the podium and sign your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Anna Perez, 344 Becker Street. I want to thank Dr. Scott Taylor for the very clear, exciting, and proactive presentation about the goals of the district. I'm delighted personally to see cultural, cultural responses and inclusion as a top priority. I think lots of members will be, too. I don't want, I don't know how far you want to reach into the historical component piece. I believe that Highland Park actually was incorporated around the school dispute, in my recollection, that's, so that's, that is, I think we didn't want to have the same schools as Raritan City, something like that, many years ago. That is to say that, you know, the schools are really part of the identity of this town. And there is, there is a publication on the history of Highland Park schools up to 1940 that was done by a superintendent, I'm sure it's in the library. There is no history of the schools after 1940. That's something that needs to be written at some point. The Highland Park parents of student of color had, has a project to partner with the Historical Society to write about African-Americans in Highland Park, and that would, the schools would be an important part of that history. So that's a project that we hope to develop in, you know, the near future. There are two, you mentioned the Human Relations Commission. There are two reports relatively recent that go back maybe 20 years and 14 years about the town and a series of police department, town services, and schools. And those are interesting, and they're interesting, they're worth checking. There are the public libraries, so that's interesting documentation. But I suppose that more recent history of maybe since No Child Left Behind was implemented, that's the type of history we're looking at. But the longer history is also interesting, and there's groups that can help in that, producing that longer history, especially after 1940. And there is a history of segregation and desegregation of the schools, that they were mandated to desegregate at some point in the 70s. Late in the process, we were mandated by the Department of Education to desegregate. And zoning had to do with this, you know, the, where the schools were located, et cetera. Anyways, something to think about. On a, you know, kind of more cheerful note, it's going to be the 100th anniversary of Irving, I think, in January next year, and that could be a happy occasion to revisit the history of our schools. So I know that the Historical Society has some materials that could be shared with the PTO and other groups, pictures, including a nice picture of Irving. So that's something to think about for the future.
Thank you.
Tara Canavera, 361 Crowes Road. Just here to remind you that we really need a permanent Director of Special Ed. I know yous are working on it, but we had an intern that yous got rid of. We had a consultant. Now we're getting a new intern. We don't want our kids played with. So while we appreciate that we're having someone that we, parents can actually get in touch with again, we do want you to take the search seriously, please. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate those comments. So this Wednesday night, just a heads up, you'll be getting a Honeywell message from me at 7:00 PM. I am going to go into detail about the process of hiring the next permanent Educational Services Director. I'm also going to speak to the new interim director. I clearly recognize your frustration. It's being felt in our schools just as well as it is at home. So continuity and stability is what we're looking to do. But Wednesday night, 7:00 PM, you'll hear more.
I just wanted to say that we just had on the agenda $6,500 for the search. So, I mean, I think we're all very happy with the results of the superintendent's search, that we, you know, we spent a bit of money as an investment to find you, and I think we're all very happy that we did. And so similarly, we are taking, I believe we're taking this search very seriously, and we're doing the same type of process. We are making a small investment, hopefully, to find someone that is of high quality.
I appreciate your support and sharing that. I should add that one thing you won't hear in the Honeywell is the reason, the main reason why we are reaching out to a group like Middlesex Educational Regional Services Commission. That group has connections to some very high-quality candidates, a network from which they can poll. And that's one main reason why we're reaching out to them, just as this board did so with the superintendent's search, reached out to folks who know other people, who are, who are willing to be here for the long haul and are good quality people. At the tail end of the process, this same group, Middlesex Ed Services, is going to vet the candidates, almost on the level that I myself was vetted when I was a finalist for this position. That group will be reaching out, again, to its network to really get the inside scoop on who, what our finalist is all about, be doing some very, very comprehensive, detailed background checks.
Any other public comment?
Seeing none. Claire, would you move the curriculum action items, please?
Yes. Okay. I would like to move items one through six on the agenda. Second? Second?
In comment, one item on the field trip approvals. One of the things I've been looking for is like the number of students involved on the field trips. And I know there's a field trip, I think it's to Boston. Right now, I think there's two or three students on that trip. Is there potential for additional students to be in that trip, and then the cost savings?
I'll let you know. I can get back to you on that. I'll email the full board about that question.
Right. But any of the ones where it's involving, like, funding, I just wonder if we can get, like, the student count, so we can kind of break it down a little bit differently.
Would be a good learning experience for me to reach out and get, I guess, an audit of how, what our ratios are, you know, kids to funding. So I can get back to the board on that.
Thank you. Sure.
Linda Roque. Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simmerusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Catherine?
I move items one through 15 on the regular agenda and 18 through, nope, 16 through 18 on the addendum.
Second?
Second.
Roque? Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simmerusti?
Yes. Abstain on four. Ha ha. See, I caught it.
Good job.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes, and I'd like to call special attention to number six as the reference I made previously. I just wanted to let Tara know especially, number six is, is right there. So it's a yes. Thank you.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber? Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes. I'd like to move Item 1 through 13 on the Agenda, and 14 and 15 on the Addendum.
Second. Roque?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simmerusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
And on the policies, I would like to move 1 on the regular Agenda, and 2 and 3 on the Addendum.
Second.
Local.
Ms. Aversa?
I just want to be clear again on for 3 on the Addendum.
I think we have to change the language a little bit, so that it actually reads...
Adoption of policies that have been reviewed, or something like that?
Or...
Adoption of reviewed policies?
Accept a recommendation to approve, well, yeah, we're not approving policies.
To adopt the following policies that have been reviewed.
Yeah. I feel like we don't do, you know what, I think we should...
No, I know what Linda's talking about.
It memorializes the fact that...
We reviewed.
I've seen that on the bottom of policies, where it just says reviewed.
On the bottom of the policies, but we don't necessarily bring that to the board. I mean, they don't, it doesn't necessarily go to the Agenda. They just get reviewed. I mean, as long as there's nothing, you know, changed, they just review them. Okay, let's review.
But there are changes, so...
You're re-adopting them after having reviewed them.
Okay, then, yes, yes.
I have 1, come on, 5330, the Administration of Medication. Now, this is mandatory, so I assume it's directly from legal law, but it says, "The school nurse or doc designated shall promptly be available on-site at school in school-sponsored functions." So for administration of, for epinephrine, I guess, for allergic reaction. Now, do we always have someone available at school-sponsored events?
We have to.
We have to, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So after-school is separate in some legal sense? Okay. Am I correct, there's usually generally not a nurse at after-school?
So there isn't a nurse, but there's somebody who's trained to give the...
We do have EpiPen trainers, but if we go on a field trip, there's going to be a nurse. And in some cases, we may have to hire a sub-nurse to staff the building at that same time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We were in the middle of voting.
That's okay. Just go down these comments. Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simmerusti?
Yes, just with the proviso, Scott, that on 5339, which is screening for dyslexia, I'd love to set up a time for us to sit down, because while the policy, I think, is fine, I think there are a number of areas where we're still not compliant with said policy. So I'd love to sit down and talk to you about that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Ms. Gowan?
Abstain.
On all?
On 1, 2, and 3, yeah, on 3.
The vote about the policies for second reading on the Agenda. 1 is the policies for second reading.
1 is second reading. I apologize. Yes. Okay. Yes on 1 on the Agenda, abstain on 2 and 3. I apologize.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
I would like to vote yes on 1, and abstain on 2 and 3, please.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
All right. There is no President's Report. Old business. There are 2 items, District Safety Committee, which you already reported on.
I'd like to just keep everybody in the loop. And my follow-up to the concerns brought up by the community regarding our collection of identification from visitors to the buildings. I told the community and the board that we would put that on hold, convene a committee, a standing committee, and discuss it there. We have developed our committee. I am recommending that Ms. Gowan represent the Board of Education on that committee. We also have, as I pointed out earlier, several members of the community who'll be involved. I'll facilitate the meeting. Right now, we are going, we're planning to have 3 meetings. The first meeting, I'm about to confirm, is going to be November 9. So I can follow up with the board, hopefully, later that day, if not at the following meeting. And of course, one of the Agenda items for that first meeting will have to do with the proposal from the principals to vet visitors to the buildings. We have other Agenda items on there as well. I can share with you just a couple of items. Some concern from faculty about door locks. I would like to bring up the issue of our crisis chain, when to update that crisis chain. So we'll be discussing all those matters, and anything else that comes up in general, and then as a miscellaneous item at the meeting.
And Jerseyon.org does that.
So at the last meeting, it was brought to my attention that there is an organization called Jerseyon.org that can provide through grants, funding for needy families who can't afford to have Internet service provided to them. Now that we are moving way into the realm of social media, using Facebook, and Honeywell, and other means to communicate, I think it's, and I know the board agrees, it's very important that we get as many of our members of the community online. So thanks to the work of one of our supervisors, Jennifer Knapp, we have uncovered quite a bit of really good things about Jerseyon.org. We first of all found out some of the logistics, Sprint is the provider for this project. Funding is provided from the federal government to the state government, that's fed on down to local communities. It apparently is plentiful. We can, we have approximately 500 free and reduced families. So we can apply, even if we don't utilize all licenses for this project, we can apply to have all 500 families receive the benefit, and then choose which ones we would actually bring onboard. The, all the cost to the families, which I, as the person enabling, this is Knapp, to go forward with this project, is $94 for what they refer to as a hotspot for families. Otherwise, they would receive up to 5 years of free connectivity.
That's amazing.
That's fantastic.
Unfortunately, the $94 could be prohibitive for some families, so we, Mrs. Knapp and I, are now seeking sources of funding. Today, we had discussion about it, threw out some ideas, perhaps a grant that might be out there. If not, we might reach out to some of our school-based, grant-funded organizations. Or there might be some impetus from the board to add that as an item to the budget at some point. But that's definitely something which we'll be moving forward to. So I thank you for that, for that suggestion. That's it.
Thank you so much for following up on it.
Absolutely.
That's great.
Any other old business?
The, I think as it was a coincidence, I participated in an online webinar with the Food Research and Action Center. It was a Breakfast Matters webinar, and they talked exactly about providing school breakfast to students who qualified. But they talked about providing the breakfast to all students, even though they did not particularly qualify. There were some federal grants that were available, and I'm, I just happened to do this, it was late September that I hopped on and I got on this webinar.
Can you send me that information?
I would love to, yeah, it would be great. They had some really wonderful ideas about how to serve the breakfast as well, because I know that some students are coming in for breakfast at half an hour before school starts. But many students come in late for different reasons, especially high school students, because they're, you know, not getting the sleep they require. We all understand that. And in many schools, they're not allowed to go to class without grabbing a sack breakfast. And they are allowed to eat it when they arrive. So it's, it's a wonderful thing for a lot of different reasons, but to take away the stigma would be the main reason. And to also provide students with some calories in the morning to help wake them up wouldn't be a bad idea for all students. So I would love to share this with you. I think it's wonderful.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
I can tell you that we do use that program in New Brunswick.
Oh, okay.
And it's both good and bad, as you can imagine.
Yeah.
So the bad is that the kids eat in the classroom. So you can imagine the problems like kindergarten, first grade. It's a lot of mess. Also, a lot of kids don't eat it for breakfast, but the smart teachers save it, so in the afternoon, when they come back, they can have something to eat. So all in all, I think it's a, I think it's a great plan.
Balance is out.
Yeah. But it's not all perfect.
They did talk about that at the end of the webinar. They said, "You might get some pushback from principals and teachers because of, you know, potential mess." So they tried to come up with ways to provide students with mess-free breakfast, a cheese stick rather than, you know, cereal and milk, or something.
If you can eat it in 3 bites, you can have it.
Exactly. Yeah. So, but I'd be happy to share that with you. It was just a very funny coincidence that I happened to do that webinar.
Beautiful.
Also, I wanted to ask about the nutrition issue that I brought up last time, the allergy meeting.
Thank you.
Yes. So I didn't get in touch with you about this to follow up.
Specifically the nut allergy concern. So I'm meeting with my leadership team tomorrow. It's on our agenda, and I'm going to make a conference call to some folks with whom I've worked previously, who've created nut-free classrooms and spaced out areas of the cafeteria for allergists. So I'll be able to report back to the board more fully on November 9.
Yeah. And I didn't realize, but in Kennelworth, you actually had nut-free schools, classrooms? I'm not sure if it was buildings or just classrooms.
Classrooms.
Wonderful.
So I will pass by a hall, and I'll see a big sign that says, "This is a nut-free classroom." So I stashed that granola bar that I was going to eat. And really, you know, you, they'd make it very apparent that's a nut-free classroom. We also, in my previous school district, had a corner of the cafeteria that was nut-free. I can't make any guarantees. I don't know what the circumstances are here with the logistics, but it's an item on our agenda tomorrow.
Wonderful. Good to hear. Thank you.
And I'll just mention really quickly, mention and thank, I want to thank Scott last week for coming out to the Defies Measurement screening. I think Anna Prey was there, was in the audience, too. It was a fantastic event. I want to thank the Middlesex County Education Association, the New Jersey Education Association. It was really just, it was amazing. We had the filmmaker there. Everybody enjoyed a nice dinner. We sat, we watched the film. There was a great panel discussion afterwards. And I think all in all, it was a really informative, really helpful evening. And, you know, I hope moving forward, we can continue to do, we've talked about another kind of presentation we could possibly do together in the future. I hope we continue to do these kinds of events to, you know, inform and inspire our community to stay abreast of issues, and to stay involved, and to, you know, our best chance of, you know, doing great things for our students, as if we all work together to, you know, to work on behalf of our public schools.
And host them, too.
And host them. I would love to host one.
Yeah.
So thank you, Scott, for coming and for supporting that.
New business. Any items of new business?
First thing I want to hit on is thank you to our student reps. That email blast earlier, before you made your, it really has an impact on my end. And I wish there was a way to, like, really incorporate that sort of reporting on a very timely sort of manner. Because the, like, the bartle, and just everything that you had there, you know, what you give in the meeting is only like maybe a fifth of what was in your other report that you sent to us. So thank you for that report. And I just, if there's a way to get it distributed differently, that'd be great.
For work on that.
Thanks, Ms.
So there's a thing on there, Resolution in Opposition of Cadillac Tax? Is somebody going to present on that, or?
I think that's Linda.
Ah, yippee, because I kind of read it and then went, "Oh, my, what is this?"
Can I just ask one question? We got several communications about the blackout dates. And I just didn't know if there was anything to be said about that issue. There was some concern about blackout dates, or also the board meeting scheduling during religious holidays, so.
So earlier this year, in the spring, and actually, I think, was it in the spring? We eliminated blackout dates as a board.
That's what I understood.
At the table. So there aren't, I mean, at this point, our community is so diverse that if we were to accommodate every religious observance with a blackout date, the teachers would be completely hamstrung. They would not be able to make assignments. You know, I know that it represents some hardship for observant students. They are, obviously, by law entitled to, to make up the work that they miss through religious observance. It is an excused absence. These accommodations are made, not in our district, all over the state. But we are, you know, we, you know, we all talk about how we love our diverse community, and we do, but this is one of the, you know, this is one of the prices that is paid. If we accommodate one group, we would have to accommodate, at this point, all groups. And you know what that would mean.
So as I understand it, it's as per the classroom teacher's scheduling. So the deadline for the assignment that was due on that day, let's say, would be adjusted by the classroom teacher on an individual classroom teacher's basis. Is that right?
Right. And accommodations must be made.
Yes.
Reasonable accommodations must be made. So if the, if the family believes that whatever accommodation has not, that is, if a family believes that there have not been reasonable accommodations.
Sure.
You know, then it, then it should go up the line, teacher, principal, superintendent, board. So, but, you know, we agreed as a board earlier, I think over the summer, maybe, to eliminate black...
I think it was the beginning of the year. Have we confirmed, though, that they have physically been taken off of the district calendar? I'm trying to confirm it on the website, and I have no connectivity, so.
They are taken off the calendar.
They are. So the district, the district calendar that's on the website has no blackout dates on it.
Correct.
I had a community member saying, like, "No, that's not correct." Now, I can't bring it up, of course. I also had thought that they were gone.
And it didn't occur to me to look. I just remember having the discussion.
Well, I mean, yeah, talk about it, right. Right. The discussion doesn't necessarily equal then it...
It didn't occur to me to look, so I can't.
I did not see it on the paper copy.
Scott can get on. Go, Scott, go. He's not on a Chromebook.
The paper copy that came home.
I'm the superintendent, remember?
I was just going to say, the paper copy that came home of the calendar did not include them. And that's what I did remember as well. But I just, my concern was for the students' anxiety level in getting their work done. So if that's being addressed, I think that's...
So, you know, the holidays are, obviously, the holidays are all on, you know, on a calendar. Parents can anticipate these issues, can reach out to the teachers, have the student tweets out to the teachers. You know, holidays are not a surprise.
Right, right.
They come at regular intervals. You know, everyone knows when they're going to be.
Every year, yep.
So, you know, I mean, a week before, 2 weeks before, you can say, "Look, I'm not going to be here on this day. How can I, you know, how can I make this arrangement?" It does put some onus on the student and on the family, but, you know, but, but everybody needs to take some responsibility for their own level of religious observance. This is, this is right.
So it's a communication.
Bad news, though, it was never taken off.
It wasn't?
Oh, wow.
I did notice that the calendar we have on the web right now has blackout dates, so I'll have to update that properly.
Okay.
I'll take care of that tonight.
I do know the paper copy didn't. I don't know.
Well, I mean, and I think it'll be, I think it should probably have some sort of communication. I mean, I think it's somewhat tricky to start off the year with a calendar that has blackout dates, and then just yank them off. What we say here at the table is one thing, but it's then incumbent upon us to communicate it to our staff, to communicate it to the parents, to communicate it to the students. So just because we've said it doesn't magically make it happen.
Didn't occur to me that it hadn't been communicated.
We're still getting a lot of questions on it from community members that come up to us individually and say, "Wait, there's a blackout date here, and it wasn't accommodated." And I was, "Oh," you know, "I thought they were gone. I thought they weren't gone."
And as for the, as for Sukkot, the night that we had the meeting, the meeting actually started at 7:30, which was an hour after sundown.
No.
Nope. The reception started at 7. The meeting itself started at 7:30, which was an hour after sundown.
Right. I understand that Simchat Torah, actually, the observance ends after sundown. It doesn't end with sundown. I missed what you're saying.
It was an hour after sundown. We started the meeting...
Yes, I know it was an hour after sundown. I understand that for observant Jews, Simchat Torah actually does not come to an end until some period after sundown. In other words, sundown is not the dividing line, so.
An hour after sundown is the dividing line. This is what I'm saying. I looked on the Chabad website. An hour after sundown is sundown, is that it's 3 stars in the sky. So we started the meeting at 7:30, which was an hour after sundown. That's when the holiday ends.
I had heard from community members, the concern was because of the, what's the word? The, the special nature of the evening, being that we were welcoming a brand-new superintendent, that there was more of, I don't know, more of an interest, but, you know, a special interest in coming and meeting the superintendent, so that there was a little bit of friction as far as the reception timing. But I don't know enough about the holiday to say when it began, when it ended. I just know that the...
Well, it began 8 days before, but...
The scheduling of a regular meeting would have been Monday. Monday would have been, right, we usually have our meetings on Mondays.
Monday would have been out of the question.
That would have been right in the middle.
It was also Yom Tov Day, I believe.
Well, no, it's the first 2 nights and the last 2 nights, which are the Yom Tov days. And so these were the last 2 nights. Monday night, there's no, there would have been no point on the Monday night when it would have been acceptable.
That's what I understood.
On Tuesday night at 7:30, it was an hour after sundown, 3 stars in the sky.
So people could skip the reception with Dr. Taylor and come to the meeting at 7:30. Right. I mean, it would be my preference in the future for there to be, where it is possible for us to make an event like that, welcoming to the entire community, it'd be wonderful if we could make an effort to do so. I mean, that would be nice. I don't know what the scheduling concerns were here. If there was something happening on Wednesday, for example, that could not be rescheduled. I mean, it would also be my personal preference to have communications go out in a timely fashion to community members. We're in a situation where, you know, community members are coming up to us and saying, "What's going on? What's going on?" And, you know, we don't speak for the board, so it would be helpful to have the board president or the superintendent make some communication response to those, to those community comments in the future.
I don't have a position on this particular issue, but I do want to point out to the community that I promised that I would engage in outreach, and one of my promises to the board when I was in the process of being interviewed was that I would reach out to the Orthodox community in particular, as well as, you know, other laypeople in the town. I'll be meeting with the head rabbi of the Chabad this Thursday. I'm meeting with the new principal of... I'm meeting with the new principal of local yeshiva, and Rabbi Daniel Lo. So, you know, I think regardless of the outcome of this situation, the, the good news is we're going to be making sure that we're in constant communication, so that if there are any concerns from the Orthodox community or any others, they know they have a, a place they can come.
Thank you, Scott, I know this was scheduled long before.
Yeah.
Present company, so I didn't mean to, I didn't mean that as a jab at you. Thank you for your effort, your outreach efforts.
They're trying to move forward.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Any other new business?
Yes.
Oh.
I should be patiently waiting.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We received this communication from another school district who had passed this resolution and was encouraging other districts in the state to do so also, which would be presented to New Jersey school boards, I believe at the delegate assembly, for adoption there. The school districts are in opposition to being imposed an excise tax of 40% of the amount of the health benefit premium, planned premiums that exceed a specified amount. And they are requesting that governmental entities, of which we are, be exempted from such a tax, I suppose primarily because we are funded by taxpayer dollars. So to pay a tax when we are already, you know, to, to charge our.
Makes no sense.
Right. So anyway, this is basically an, a statement in opposition of the Cadillac tax, as it's called under the Affordable Healthcare Act.
May I ask a, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, I was just saying that they're encouraging all districts to approve this and send it to the legislators. And certainly, we can modify this to read any way we want, as, and also to specify who we would like it to be sent to.
Can we see a copy of it?
She sent, there's a copy.
It should be.
Oh. Could we maybe put together?
This is the attachments.
You emailed it to everyone.
I emailed it to everyone, and it should have been on your drive as an attachment.
Can we maybe put together a few interested board members, if there are a few interested board members, to get together, read it over, think it through, and then maybe come back to the full board?
I was hoping maybe that would have happened before tonight.
I have my thoughts on it, but they're not positive, so I don't.
That's fine.
Maybe some board members are more supportive, wanna do that.
I would say that as long as it's approved before the delegate assembly, then we can join in, in support of such a resolution at the delegate assembly.
Well, I mean, if all we have to do for the delegate assembly is send me to vote yea or nay, so.
Well, I think that also we are, they are proposing that we send it to legislators, federal legislators, who would be, have some position as far as helping us to oppose that.
Right, I'm just saying that that could be, unless there's a timeline on that.
I don't believe so.
The DA shouldn't be a timeline, because all that's gonna happen at the DA is I vote yes on behalf of the board, or I vote no on behalf of the board, so.
I have no, I have no problem with that.
And I mean, I certainly, I kind of glanced it over, but certainly not enough to digest it in any way. I mean, I'd certainly be willing to get together with a couple of other people if anyone is interested.
Sure, yeah, yeah. All right, let's do it.
Yay, okay.
Others, it's gonna be scintillating.
Scintillating.
Come on.
It was an interesting-looking proposal. I also didn't feel like I really got a full understanding. There was frankly, a lot of numbers thrown at us in the proposal. Not numbers, numbers, I mean, I'm talking, you know, like.
The, the amount that qualifies it as a Cadillac plan, you mean?
Um, the idea of us being taxed twice did not, it was not clear to me until the discussion that you just had just now, that we were being taxed on taxes, that's what it sounds like.
Well, the residents would be taxed.
Well, not yet.
On something, because the school district is being taxed. So basically, it's the, the tax, the excise tax will be passed directly to the taxpayer, the local taxpayers.
Okay.
Because all of our funding, I mean, we, we have static state aid, and so any increase in, in our costs is passed along to the taxpayers.
You could make the argument that it's decreasing state aid, because we are, our expenses are increasing as our, our state aid is staying zero.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, to clarify, this is not yet going to be imposed on public entities, it's imposed on insurers at this time, right? This is in anticipation of a possible move to impose it upon the entities themselves?
No, no, the, the premise is that the insurers have to maintain a certain profit margin. So any increases in their costs would be passed directly into the premiums.
I see, I said that there was something about.
Would reflect on increased premiums. And then our premiums increase, that means the excise tax increases.
Right, right.
So it's kind of a.
Double whammy.
A vicious cycle.
It's a spiral.
All of those things, yeah.
No, thank you.
At the, at a meeting of the Borough's Universal Access Commission, the question of access to the playgrounds was raised. I think this is an issue for Irving and Bartle. And so I wondered if you could, if, if there could just be a report back to, to the, maybe the facilities committee, so that we can talk about, I don't, I, I'm, I'm not there anymore, so I don't even know if there are timbers in the way, or if you can access the equipment at both Irving and Bartle. And, and, you know, I think that the ideal is a path through so that a wheelchair could actually, you know, get to different equipment, but I, I don't know what the situation is, and so I don't know, you know, whether there is access or not.
Okay, you know what I'd like to do is reach out to you, because I want to get details of what might be the concern. In terms of accessibility, I, I don't think there's any inability to get to the area, if that's what a concern is. We have a gate in Bartle.
Well, right.
No, but like the actual play equipment, so I think it's actually in, it's in an area that's, that's boarded by, like, you know, timbers, and so it might be hard for a wheelchair to, you know, traverse that. But, you know, and so all day, at the shore this summer, I saw all of these wheelchair paths on the sand that made the beach accessible to wheelchairs. Seems like that would be a very good.
Oh, wow.
Solution.
So that I don't need to reach out to you, something to follow up to you about?
Thank you.
That I'll do.
Just so I can report back to them about what the conditions are, and then it can be a topic of conversation here.
Sure.
Was the question about the actual equipment, like the swings being accessible?
It's access to the equipment.
Just access to the equipment.
It's not just, it's not like the, I mean, they have the, the swing at the Carcy Park.
Right.
That is for, you know, but that's not what, this is about actual access.
I see, okay.
And you mentioning access made me think of the fact that next Tuesday night, October 27th, at Bartle, from 7:30 to 9:30, the Highland Park PTOs are sponsoring a candidate night for the candidates for the board. So we hope to see lots of folks out there. And there's also gonna be babysitting provided by the Highland Park Honor Society students in the, in the media center. So if you have school-aged children, you're welcome to bring them, you'll have a spot for them to go, and then the, the event itself will be in the Bartle auditorium. And we've had a request to make sure that we have that accessible as well, so we'll have to make sure that the back door is open and the lower door as well.
Any other new business?
Um, thank you, Darcy, 'cause I was gonna bring that up. So November 3rd is Election Day, and this is to all you people that are at home, you need to make sure that you're registered to vote. I know that you can go to rockthevote.com, and you put in some information, and they'll tell you if you are registered to vote, and then you have to know where you vote. But I really want to encourage everybody to go out and vote. It's not a huge election, there's not, you know, it's no presidential election, but it's just important that we do exercise that responsibility as being part of a democracy. I know that from the board, I am the only one that is running for reelection, and there are four other candidates.
You might be crossing it, too.
Oh, sorry. So, um, so just please make sure you vote.
And unfortunately, I think it's too late to register for this.
It is too late to register, but some people don't know if they're registered, which is really sad. So you do need to know if you're registered.
Any other new business? Okay, second public comment, Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Please sign in.
Can I just again say I'd like swivel chairs on the side of the table? We say this a lot, I want a swivel chair.
We're just turning sideways, I'm sorry.
Tara Canavera again. I just want to clarify, what I said was out of frustration, and I do want everybody, the public, to know that our special ed teachers and support staff have been excellent even with all this turmoil going on. And I do have faith that you will do the right thing, it's just very frustrating for all the parents. On another note, which I forgot to mention in my first comments, Feed the Children sounds like an awesome program. My concern, though, is, I know there was a lot of families who qualify and were afraid to sign up because they didn't want that information out. So I'd just like you to be very careful on how you get those families' names to the right people.
That's a great point. I should have added that one thing Mrs. Knapp also found out was that, well, I, I mean, I referred to actually two items tonight that have to do with potentially disclosing information. Feed the Children is one, and Jerseyon.org is the other. I'll use this opportunity just to point out regarding Jerseyon, we would actually complete the applications on behalf of those families to whom we reach and might be interested in that program. Might want to do something similar in the area of Feed the Children as well. Reach out first and then take ownership over their process, so we don't have to put any other information out there. We keep it in-house. So maybe I can apply that standard to both processes.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add really quick, the webinar, again, that I coincidentally took, they did talk a lot about this, because it is an issue. There is a stigma attached to receiving services of any kind, and there's also the